2011, public invited, public participation. Meeting called or ordered by myself at 7:30 PM. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Cesaro.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Councilman Fiora.
Yes.
Councilman Stanton.
Here.
Council President Fox.
Here.
Others present are James O'Bavero, our Mayor, John Inglisino, our Township Attorney, and I'd like to introduce Carol Keigho, who is our acting interim Township Clerk. And hopefully she's gonna keep me out of trouble. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council meeting of June 21, 2011. Formal action may or may not be taken. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 15, 2010, whereas remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record and the Star Ledger and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 16, 2010. Please note, our council meetings are videotaped, they're aired on public access channel 21 at 2:00 PM on Sunday, and are also available for viewing at www.parcipani.net. Carol, our ordinances?
Yes, Council President, all of the listed ordinances have been duly advertised and posted, and they are ready for council action at your regular council meeting next week.
Thank you. Discussion reminder, scheduled meeting 6:21:11 at 7:30 PM is a regular meeting, public's invited, public participation. On July 12 at 7:30 PM, agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. We have minutes for approval, Carol?
They are all in order, all council has been copied, and they will be on your agenda for action at your next meeting.
Thank you. Mayor? Do you have a presentation?
Yeah, ADP's not here, I don't see anybody from ADP, so... There's no presentation right now.
ADP? No?
Also, we're supposed to be on the agenda, the sewer maintenance portion to be written off, you know, that was something that we discussed last week. I spoke to the council, I sent them over IRS Code 164-164-2, and it's in review right now. I think we're gonna be recommending to send this out to a professional CPA firm to see if this can be done.
All right, for those that weren't here last time, would you explain what that is?
Yeah, what it is, on your sewer bill, you have a maintenance portion of your sewer bill, which is, you get billed quarterly, I think it's $61. Well, that's maintenance, that's administration, so that's like a tax, so you might be able to write that portion off on your taxes at the end of the year. We're just trying to get verification from IRS to see if this can be done. That would be the only way you could do it, if it's possible, because the other one are user fees. Basically, if you use it, you pay for it. But this is not a user fee, this is a maintenance that is allocated on each bill and each quarter. So, but I spoke to the Township Council, I mean Township Attorney, and we agreed that we're gonna have a professional service look into it, because to try to get the IRS to determine if it can be done or not, I don't think we're gonna get an opinion from the IRS.
No?
No, so we have to get a...
They got an opinion about everything else.
I know, right? Well, that's when you owe money.
Okay. Mayor, you've... That's it?
That's it.
Okay, under administration, bids to be taken, none. To be taken, none, to be taken, none. Quotations, proposals, qualifications, received 528 and 9, proposal for the redesign permitting construction and operation and maintenance services for sludge incinerator and design permitting construction, operation, and maintenance service for a new sludge cake receiving facility at the wastewater treatment facility.
Okay, we...
I'm sorry?
Okay, I got it, when you're finished, I'll read it. You're talking about the, which one are you on? I'm sorry, John.
I'm under quotations, received on page 5.
Okay, okay, that's right. I jumped ahead, apologize. I'm not used to being Jasmine Lynn.
(laughing). Read the 414, okay. 414-11, qualification statement for risk management consultant slash liability insurance broker of record services, requested, none. Resolutions, Carol, they're all set?
Yes, again, everyone has been copied, and they are all in order, and they will be on your agenda.
Okay. We have a request, lost my place. They're all set, all right. Ordinances, approval restrictions on maximum occupancy of residential units, that's from April 11, and amending and supplementing Chapter 4, Administration of Government, Article 5, Section 4-14, division of purchasing agent by increasing the bid threshold.
Council President, if you are all in agreement, I will have that ordinance prepared for introduction for this coming business meeting.
Do they have a problem with it?
No, that's just, very briefly, that's just, because you have a purchasing agent, the law allows you to take advantage of a higher bid threshold for awarding public contracts. We really just have to tweak your existing ordinance to provide your purchasing agent with that authority, which I think is the intent and typically what municipalities would do if they have a purchasing agent.
Okay, thank you, John. That's me. Go ahead. Engineering report.
Yep. Matt, Council President, certainly. Thank you. Status of road resurfacing, the Pudding Stone area, no change. Revisions to escrow requirements in connection with residential sidewalk, driveway repairs, no change. Troy Brook through the Hills of Troy, no change. 711 Park Road, Fairview Estates, no change. Edgefield Drive, no parking zone, Upper, no change. Canterbury Estates, vacation of lots 26 and 77 and Block 98, no change. New Road flood mitigation, no change. Train horns at intersections, quiet zones, Mr. Simpson, no change. Collapsing retaining walls, 1 and 3 Eldridge Road, Block 89, lots 13.2 and 13.1, no change. Major soil moving permit, Avis Budget Group, Block 202, Lot 1.9. The planning board received a request for an extension of the major soil moving permit and recommends that the Township Council approve this extension to October 20, 2011. However, there's no documentation that the Township Council has ever received or approved the original soil moving permit, therefore, the engineering office recommends that the Township Council approve the permit along with the extension to coincide with the terms of the site plan approval. All the conditions previously listed are still valid. The recommendation, a resolution must be adopted by the Township Council.
May I make a comment, Council President?
Sure, certainly.
On the train horn intersection, we're gonna have to make a decision if we want to go forward with the study that was performed, and I'll speak to the BA, Business Administrator, if we want to move this out of the engineering to the council discussion for the next agenda meeting.
Fine with me. Anybody have a problem with that? Good. Chief, from our Chief Financial Officer, amending adopted budget, clicker ticket mobilization. Basically, that is, we receive funds from the state or the federal government, I can't recall, and it will lower the budget. My understanding, is that correct, Mayor?
Yeah, I said we'll lower the budget on that.
Mr. President?
I think, let me see.
Mr. President? Go ahead. May I, please?
Yes, it's funds that are coming as grants. I don't know if it's been anticipated or not, before I say it does, I think it might have been anticipated, revenues, so...
All right, John, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, thank you, Council President. Right-of-way use agreement, Light Tower Fiber, Long Island LLC, quote-unquote, Light Tower. Light Tower is seeking to install fiber optic cable within the right-of-ways of the Township Parcipani for the purpose of operating and/or maintaining a telecommunications system. A right-of-way use agreement is necessary to allow Light Tower to use the public right-of-ways for this purpose. The engineering office has reviewed the agreement and has no objection to executing same. They recommend the resolution must be adopted by the Township Council.
Okay. All right, continuing with our Chief Financial Officer, amending the... You're done?
Oh, no, no. What's the feeling of the council as to a resolution for Light Tower?
It's recommended by the engineer, I see no problem with it. That should be on.
Yeah. And move on to the next one, Council President?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Oh, no, no problem, there's a bunch of them, sir. Major soil moving permit, Church of Living Grace, Block 740, Lot 4. The zoning board has approved a major soil moving permit for the moving of 656 cubic yards of soil. The zoning board and the, excuse me, the zoning board and the engineering offices recommend that the Township Council approve the permit with the conditions listed in Mr. Lees's April 12, 2011 memorandum to the board.
Okay. All right, put it on, Carol, please.
Okay. Council President Fox, all right, it looks like I got them all. Okay, thank you, sir.
You sure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, forgot where I was.
Amending the...
Yeah, the Chief Financial Officer, amending the adopted budget, NJDEP Clean Communities entitlement, fiscal year 2011, amending adopted budget Clean Energy Pay for Performance Program. We, the Chief Financial Officer is asking that we take action on this tonight, and that's the auction for sale of township assets.
Gotta put these on.
Yeah. You want one at a time or do more?
Well, you read them all, we should take action. Still, put them on.
Yeah, put them on, please, Carol. Auction of this for sale of township assets, formal action to be taken by the council at this meeting to authorize action. Can I have a motion, please?
What are the assets, by the way?
It's on the next page, it should be. Your house is one of them.
My house. No problem.
Nothing on the page. That's fine, I looked at the list.
If you want me to read it, I can.
No.
No, no, no.
We received a copy of the list.
Do I have a motion?
I didn't get one. I didn't get one copy, but that's fine if Mike said it's okay.
Isn't it basically stuff that's...
It's vehicles, it's vehicles, and I can stop.
Or, ladies and general, we're making money off of them.
Right.
Thank you, Pat.
Pat, it's all vehicles.
It is my house. Thank you, Pat.
All right, do I have a motion to authorize the auction?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Mr. Stanton.
Brian's second. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Cesaro.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
And Mr. Fox.
Yes. Okay, it's now time for our Township Attorneys' report. John?
Yes, I forwarded correspondence which I think you all received tonight regarding an election law issue that came to our attention yesterday in regards to the ballot for the fall on the Democratic side, and we've issued a letter on that.
Saw that.
Essentially, the facts are as follows. There was a candidate, Mr. Crawford, who appeared on the Republican ballot for the primary. That was a contested rate, a contested race for the remaining two-year unexpired term of former Council President Rossi, who is now on the Freeholder Board. And under law, when she stepped down, there was a process by which to fill her seat until the next election, because she had resigned early enough in her term. So then there has to be a special election to fulfill the remaining two years of her term. So that is one seat, there were two candidates in that race that were on the ballot. Mr. Farrar had won that race in the Republican primary, but Mr. Crawford had received 44 write-in votes on the Democratic, at the ballot box from Democrats, 44 write-ins for Democrats.
I didn't read it.
For him to be the nominee on the Democratic side, so that he would be the Democratic candidate on the ballot in the fall. There was some, I think, discussion and maybe some miscommunication between the Clerk's Office and Parcipani and the Clerk's Office in Morristown, because I think there the issue focused on whether or not there was a sufficient number of write-in votes, and there were a sufficient number of write-in votes in order for Mr. Crawford to gain the Democratic nomination. However, in New Jersey, there is a statute that precludes a candidate from being on the ballot for one party in the primary and then being on the ballot for another party in the fall, and I'm quoting from NJSA 1913-14.1. And that provision provides, it's not long, I'll read it into the record, "A person whose name appears on the ballot at a primary election for the general election as a candidate for nomination by a political party for any municipal office shall not, shall not, be eligible to serve as the candidate of any other political party for that office in that municipality at the general election following that primary." So you can't be on the ballot for one party in the primary and another party in the general election. So based upon discussions that I had today with County Council, our Clerk's Office, and with Morris County Clerk's Office, there was a corrective certification that was filed timely and accepted by the Morris County Clerk's Office, so that there will not be a Democrat, a candidate, on the ballot in the general election for the two-year unexpired term, it only deals with that seat. We've issued an opinion to that effect, and I know communication will go out to Mr. Crawford, who is entitled to be notified of that occurrence. The only other item that we have, I guess, do you want to do the Sinagro?
Yes, Sinagro presentation.
My partner, John Witschuskal, is here. John has been spearheading the negotiations regarding the Sinagro contract, and I know that he has reported to the council in closed session previously. We are really now at the tail end of that process, and it is appropriate now to report publicly on the progress of that contract and its status, so yield the floor to John. Yeah, just remember that the TV camera's right there, John.
Okay.
Kind of want to make sure that...
I'll make sure I turn around. Good evening, everyone, John Witschuskal, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. We have before the council a resolution for the adoption of a, for the adoption of a resolution which would authorize the execution of the contract. The contract is titled "An Agreement for Bioprocessing and Energy Supply Services Between the Township of Parcipani Troy Hills and Parcipani Troy Hills Bioenergy Center LLC," which is a Sinagro company. Just for everyone's understanding, Sinagro is essentially a national leader in waste management, residuals management, and that's why we're here this evening. By way of background, we're all aware of the fact that the township owns and operates its own wastewater treatment plant over on Edwards Road. Not to be overly simplistic, but the way it essentially works, we take our sewage flows in. Okay. We essentially take those, can you hear me all right back there?
Hear you now.
Essentially, the sewage flows come in, they run through the sewage treatment facility through a series of ponds, the residuals that are in that water settle out, we clean the water, we polish the water, and it's almost a shame that water is so clean, and we discharge it right back into the Whippany and Passaic River watersheds. What we have at the end of that process is what we just call biosolids, it's essentially a sludge that's left over that we need to dispose of. Now, there are essentially two ways to dispose of that, of that leftover biosolid or the sludge. We've got incineration as one option, or simply waste disposal, paying firms to come in here, loading it up on trucks, and shipping it out to landfills in, you know, Pennsylvania and points further in the Midwest. In the early 1970s, Parcipani constructed two multiple hearth incinerators at the wastewater facility. We've got two stacks that I'm sure you've seen if you've gone by there, and those were built to deal with those residuals. For about 30 to 35 years, that incinerator operated, Parcipani was able to treat or process its own sludge through the incinerator, and Parcipani also took in sludge and biosolids from other municipalities and other authorities, and that provided a waste stream, or, I'm sorry, an additional revenue stream to the municipality, or at least it was intended to, and I'm not sure how in the long run that really worked for the town. But by the late 1990s, early 2000s, those incinerators were essentially dinosaurs. They weren't efficient, they weren't particularly clean, they certainly didn't meet the, you know, ever-changing state and federal clean air mandates, and the fuel costs just kept rising on them. As our energy costs kept rising, the municipalities that were sending their stuff to our facility just started dropping out. The cost was simply too much, and it was cheaper for them to just contract with the firms like Sinagro or SpectraServe and others just to take their waste away. Parcipani itself does not generate enough biosolids to warrant the money that was going into it, and, you know, candidly, the township was losing money at that time. So we shut the incinerators down about four or five years ago, and for the past four or five years, we've been doing, like most of the other municipalities in the region, we contract on a year-in, year-out basis and have these residuals companies remove our biosolids. For the past several years, a company by the name of SpectraServe has been providing that service to us, and what it's really done is it's left us at the mercy of market forces. We pay a higher rate to have those solids removed, we're still paying for processing, for de-watering this stuff, and it's, it takes quite a bit of our own financial resources and our own manpower to do that. About three years ago, the township embarked on its own study into what it could do, was there any way to retrofit those stacks, the incinerators? That was our first option, let's look at retrofitting it, let's see if we could bring our fuel costs down, make them more efficient, and what we found in short order was it was just too cost prohibitive for us to do it. There was a lot of permitting involved, the regulations were more stringent, so then we went out to the third parties and said, "Well, why don't you come in, why don't you retrofit it, fix it for us, and you can come in and operate the same type of facility that we were?" And again, the response we got in the marketplace was it was just too expensive, and actually the types of incinerators that we have there don't match up with our new plant that's coming online and in fact would be detrimental to it. Township then went in a different direction and looked at the option of, well, what's it gonna cost us to build a new incinerator, and again, do it ourselves the same way we did before? And the costs that were involved are in the tens of millions of dollars, and it's really just not our business. We don't generate enough of our own sludge, again, for it to be, make financial sense for us to operate it, so we'd be back in this position of having to go out, market our facility, find other municipalities that would want to bring their product here so that we could treat it and incinerate it. So, back in May of 2009, the township did send out a request for qualifications and proposals to private firms to come in and essentially design, construct, and operate this type of facility at the wastewater treatment plant. Sinagro was the primary responsive bidder on the project. Essentially, what they proposed is a complete design, complete permitting, and construction of a biosolids treatment facility on the plant property, essentially where the existing incinerators are, and all of that to be done at their sole cost and expense. What their proposal entails is the construction of a single state-of-the-art, what's called a fluidized bed incinerator on the wastewater plant. Essentially, the incinerator, based on everything we've gotten, will meet all current and the future DEP and EPA regulations. The likelihood is it'll probably be the only one that will meet those stringent requirements anywhere within this region. Now, they can get away with building a, what they're gonna build is a single incinerator on the site, that'll be more than enough to handle not only our, meet only our needs, but the needs of other municipalities as well. They're also gonna be proposing a, or constructing a cogeneration facility. What that is, is it's a facility that's gonna convert the heat that's generated from their operation, turn it into energy, and it'll be a renewable resource that'll be created here, it'll bring down the overall costs, the electric costs, and it's gonna be a benefit to the municipality. As before, Parcipani does not generate enough sludge to justify the construction of this incinerator, so Sinagro pursued to the proposal, they will be managing and processing biosolids from other municipalities and authorities, similar to what Parcipani did before. And as I'm gonna get into in a moment, the township is gonna receive a benefit from that in the form of host fees or tipping fees based on the product that comes in from other municipalities into the town. Just so everyone is aware, the overall cost that Sinagro is gonna incur in designing, constructing, and operating this facility is about $60 million, so it's a pretty significant number, and probably a similar number to what the municipality would face if it looked and pursued this type of project itself. I can tell everybody in the room, over the past year, we've spent a lot of time with Sinagro, we've had a lot of meetings negotiating and renegotiating the terms of the transaction, understanding what their costs are, what the town is gonna pay, what the town's gonna be able to save, and at this point, we think we've got a very good, very good and a very fair deal for the township. I can tell you, there was a lot of give and take on this, with most of the give on the part of Sinagro to the benefit of the municipality. Just to provide everyone with the main deal points here, again, Sinagro is assuming all cost responsibility for the design, permitting, and construction and operation of this facility. There are DEP permits, there are federal permits they have to obtain, there are county permits, and not to mention all the municipal construction permitting and the like, and again, their cost is about $60 million. Part of that, they're gonna be paying in cash, and a bulk of it, they're gonna have to finance themselves. The term of the agreement is 20 years. There is a right to request an additional extension term of not less than five years, though that is not mandatory on the part of the municipality. Sinagro, in consideration of this contract, is paying the township a lump sum host fee of $1 million. That host fee is gonna be paid out in installments in the early part of the contract, $250,000 at the notice of commencement of construction, which would be 2012, at least that's the estimated date. A year later, in 2013, they'd pay the next installment of $250,000 to the municipality with the balance due at the commencement of operations, which at this point is estimated to be 2014. It's the point where everything is built out, and they're ready to put this thing, this whole system, online. Sinagro will essentially be renting the portion of the property, we're not conveying title to them, we're still gonna own the property itself, and they will be paying annual rents in the amount of $100,000. It'll be a lump sum payment each year for the next 20 years, and any extended term as well. Sinagro is gonna treat the town's plant biosolids at a reduced rate from what the market rate is. In the first year, that rate'll be $79.95 a ton, and it will be subject, it'll increase with the Consumer Price Index on an annual basis. That processing fee will include Sinagro de-watering our biosolids, and the only reason I want to mention that, it is a benefit, it costs the township about $12 a ton to de-water, it is a cost, it is an expense, Sinagro can do it less, and with them doing it, we'll be able to take the personnel that would otherwise be doing that and, you know, essentially redeploy them to other operations in the plant where candidly, they could just be a lot more useful. We are required to provide a minimum of $14,000, $14,000 tons of residuals per year at that, and the reduced rate is limited to 16,500 tons per year. If we go over 16,500 tons, we are going to pay anything over that, we would pay market rate, whatever that may be at the time. In looking at this, the, our professionals, we're all comfortable that we'll fall within that range, our general annual production is about 15,000 tons, 15 to 15.5 per year, so we're pretty comfortable, we'll fall within that range, we'll certainly meet the minimums, but we don't expect to exceed the maximum. I would advise it, in the unlikely event that the market rate drops below what we're paying, we did build into the contract that we would pay the lesser of whatever the rate is at that time and the market rate. The next fee category that comes to the township is the host fee that I mentioned earlier. Sinagro is gonna be bringing in residuals from other municipalities into this plant, and they're gonna be required to pay us $2.50 per ton in year one. And that rate, that host fee, is also gonna be subject to Consumer Price Index increases over time, so each year it'll increase with the CPI. If Sinagro is successful, if they're operating at a certain level, we did also negotiate an additional one-time increase of 5% for that host fee. an additional one-time increase of 5% for that host fee, and that's at year 10. So if they've been operating, which will be a benefit to the township because we'll be collecting a lot of host fees, if they hit a certain number, we'll get an additional increase at that point over and above what we are otherwise entitled to. I can advise you that the income projections on the host fees in the first couple of years look to be in the range of $300,000 to $400,000 coming to the municipality. With the CPI increases over time, in the later years, we're looking at upwards of $600,000 annually, just in host fees and the fees that are paid to us from the solids that are coming in from the other municipalities, which is one of the benefits to the township. Generally speaking, our energy savings on the cogeneration facility are about $50,000 a year. They may be higher, it just depends on how that works over the course of it. Synagro is going to be providing interim services. Obviously, we've got a two- to three-year window during which they're going to have to go out and get all their permits and construct this facility. So we're still going to need to ship our sludge out of here. Synagro is going to provide that to us on an interim basis, starting next year, at a reduced rate of $77.57. That'll go up by Consumer Price Index as well. We do have some additional terms that are in the agreement that bring some additional benefits to the municipality. One of them is, well, we call it FOG, fats, oils, and grease, products that are generated at restaurants in the area, or other similar uses. There is a value to the grease and the oils that are generated from those businesses. Those products can be brought into our facility, it can be processed, and it can be converted to energy and reused in the facility. It provides an opportunity, not only for cost savings to the township, but possibly a revenue stream as well. So we don't really have that factored in, but we've got a provision in the contract that allows for that, allows for us to develop that, and in all likelihood, would be an additional benefit. The overall value of this contract to the township, on the conservative side, is about $15 million over the term, the 20-year term. And if Synagro is as successful as they hope to be, it's upwards of $18 or $19 million to the township in terms of revenues that are going to come in from host fees, the savings we're going to have from an energy perspective, as well as the treatment of our waste. And the other benefit is, obviously, the lion's share of the risk in this situation lies with Synagro. They're going to be the ones that are going to have to go out and design this, construct this, and permit this at their own cost. We have been working on the contract. All the deal points are largely completed. We're really just working on the fine points at this time. Couple of things I do want the council to be aware of, as well as the public, there will be a parent guarantee from Synagro on this project. The entity that we're going to enter into the contract with is a single-purpose entity that's created to operate this facility. But Synagro, the parent, will be providing a guarantee overall on it. They're going to be required to post all requisite insurance coverage and the typical things we would require of anybody who is coming in and building a facility on our property, leasing our property, and the like. They are going to have to design, permit, and construct this at their own cost, and if they need, the township's professionals to participate in the process, they're going to have to reimburse. There'll be a provision for reimbursable costs for the outside, whether it's John or myself or our financial advisors or our other professionals. The agreement as written does include indemnification and defense provisions, so if anything occurs out there, Synagro is going to have to defend the township, indemnify us, and we can't be liable for anything that happens as a result of their operations. And Synagro will also be responsible to pay any fines or penalties if there are any violations of air permits or anything of that nature, whether they're in the name of Synagro or if they're in the name of the township, because some of the permits would have to be since it's our property and our operation. At the end of the day, they're going to be responsible for that.
And it's our license.
Yes, correct. So...
It's our license, they're going to use it, but they're fully responsible for all liability on that, use of that license.
Correct. And they will, and there are going to be air permits that they're going to have to secure and a number of, a whole host of licenses and permits that are going to be part of their project. So anything that's in the township's name, they'll be responsible for. Obviously, we're going to cooperate with them, and we're going to have to work hand in hand over the next couple of years, not just through the contract phase, but through the design phase.
It's a good deal for Parsippany. We can't lose.
I think that's it. I probably gave more than everybody wanted to hear, but I just wanted to make sure everyone on the council and the public was apprised of at least the main points and why we're doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stick around in case the public has some questions, will you please?
Yep.
John, do you, do we need to put this on for next week?
Yeah, I think that's, pending successful completion of the negotiation of the contract, it would be ready for a resolution of contract next week. I don't think we want to put it on until the contract's actually ready to be signed, but I think we're anticipating that that will be the case. So we should put it on the agenda for next week. If for some reason, you know, the contract is just not ready next week, then it will be put on the next month to do after it's ready.
Carol, will you put it on, please?
Yes.
Mr. President, is this the appropriate time to bring up the local register of vital statistics?
If you wish, I'm not done with the report yet.
Okay.
It'll take me a minute, Mike. Township offices a committee, no reports. Communications, Carol?
Yes, these are communications primarily seeking support for the Open Public Records Act and the Oprah, and the council has been copying on all of these also.
Okay. Applications, are you going to be ready for next week?
Yes, I'm very glad to report that all of our liquor licenses are in place to be renewed, and that's quite an accomplishment for the amount of liquor licenses that we do have. So everything is ready to go.
Thank God. Okay, thank you, Carol. Mike?
Since our township clerk has left, Tonay has been our local register of vital statistics. I've been performing that function for 13 years, and she is certified. And she's requested that she be given that designation permanently. I agree with her efforts, and I would like to recommend that we, I don't know, John, if we need an ordinance or if we need a resolution to officially designate her.
I think we have to amend an ordinance. Question, does that only come with a title?
I have a question.
Well, that can be researched later during the budget process. We can, if additional, I mean, if it is a promotion, but she's been doing the function now.
Yeah.
And she continues to do the function now anyway.
So what you're saying...
So all I'm saying is make it official and make it...
That's fine, but my question was...
And if it's appropriate later to give her a few more bucks, I think she's entitled.
In next year's budget. All right, well, we'll deal with money in next year's budget.
We should be entitled to do that.
I'm not ready to deal with money in this economy right now.
I think, Mr. Piero, I, this is the first I've heard of it, but from what Carol tells me, your ordinance currently reads that the clerk is also the registrar.
That's correct.
So there would be an ordinance change that would be required.
And the clerk is gone, so we need to make the change, and that's what I'm...
We can make an ordinance, we have to make an ordinance change.
That's what I'm requesting.
Okay.
But we are getting a new clerk.
I know that. But we have a township employee in-house who's been performing the function for 13 years. And I've always supported promoting from within or supporting from within, and she's been doing the function. Let's give her the designation.
I'm not saying not to promote her. I just want to ask a question, John. Angusino, as a councilperson, are we allowed to look at anything of this performance of this employee or no? I don't, I mean, Mr. DePiero's been here a long time. I'm here a short time.
Right.
I want to know what I have the right to look at before I make a vote.
Well, the question is, I understand the motivation, but the question is really one that, although related to the person who's doing it, is really one of, that should be devoid from the person who's doing it, in the sense that we're talking about decoupling the two jobs. In other words, right now, there's a requirement that those functions, that the clerk be the registrar.
That's correct.
And so we're talking about deleting that requirement from the ordinance. And so that's really what the issue is. If you want to discuss an individual employee, then there would have to be a rice notice, there would have to be an opportunity for that employee to be present and to participate in those discussions. And we can certainly talk about that if that's what you want to do. But I think Mr. DePiero's suggestion was a little different in the sense that it was just a change in the ordinance that would delete the requirement that the clerk be the registrar.
Oh, so he wants to change it from the clerk, okay.
Yeah. And I suggest, let me take a look at it. This is the first I've heard of it.
Take a look at it and see if we're setting a precedent here, because is this absolutely standard throughout the state that the clerk is the registrar, or is there some variation in other towns?
I'm sure there's variation, but again, this is the first time I'm hearing of the issue, so let me take a look at it.
I think in some towns, the health department does the registrar.
Yeah, it can vary, there's no set. But let me take a look at it, and then I'll report back.
My question is, it's a silver service position, right? There are steps involved with this. I want to know, when we give her this title, is she entitled to a raise?
I understand your question and...
That's all I want to answer before I vote. I'm not against the person.
That was my issue, I'm not...
I'm not against the person, I'm not against promoting. I just want all the facts before I give my vote. So can we table it for next time?
Well, I don't think there's anything to move at the moment, other than we will review the issue and report back at the next meeting.
Okay, that's good for me.
No raise, no money. Any other councilperson or the mayor have anything before we open it up to the public? So you know one? I now open up the meeting to the public. You have five minutes to speak. Anybody that would wish to speak to the council, please approach the microphone, sign in, state your name when you start talking. Hello, Mr. Simpson.
Yes, sir. I see we're moving along a little bit on this wayside horn thing, and I don't know if any of the council members were down to listen to the trains. I know the mayor was there, and his comment was, oh, those horns are really loud. I know there's a report went out last month. I don't know if any of the, any of the council read the report?
I didn't see it. I didn't see it, Mr. Simpson. I didn't see it.
They should have gotten the report. We handed it to Judy that night when we had the report. I don't know if she gave it to you guys or not.
You're blaming it on Judy, she's not here anymore.
No, well, Judy.
How long have we been at that one? I don't remember seeing it.
Well, if you didn't get it, I'll have the clerk email tomorrow. But the point I think Mr. Simpson's making now, we need to make a decision from this point on, because we did have the study, and there was criteria in that study, and there was cost in that study as well. And we need to determine if we want to spend money for a quiet zone. I think that's really what this is going to come down to now.
What was the cost, Mayor, did you recall?
I don't remember the cost. Sixty to 90,000, something like that, you know, offhand, that's what it was. But when you get the report, you need to read the report and explain, you know, explain to see what type of zones there are as well. Sorry, I got allergies, but... So really, my recommendation is, let's, you know, we have the study, let's make a decision on it. That's really all it is from this point on.
Well, I'd rather read that...
Yeah, absolutely. You need to read it, digest it, and then, you know, that's why I think we put on to the discussion.
Where would the money, if we decided to go ahead, where would the money come from?
Well, right now, there is no money, the budget for it. You'd have to allocate money out of other departments if you wanted to do it. If you do want to do it and you decide to do it eventually, it would have to be in next year's budget. And we'd have to, you know, go from there.
Well, we got a little more slack in next year's budget, right?
Well, hopefully, our revenues increase.
Yeah.
I know, I know, we have a surplus $2 million in money laying around. Plus, the New Jersey DOT has given money for quiet zones to other towns. So I think we should be able to get some money from the DOT. And also, we got a little in with the county. Maybe we can get the county to chip in some money. So this is something we could look at.
Mayor, would Jamie, would you talk to Jasmine about the...
Sure, well, we'll look to see if there's grant money out there.
Over the county?
Yep.
Thank you.
I don't think, you know, that the money should be that much of a problem. And I suggest, you know, that the council go down and listen to a few trains go by, and so you see what we're talking about.
Jamie, you said 60 to 90,000?
I think, don't quote me on it, because I haven't seen the report after I gave it to you guys, I thought.
Yeah, I think when we originally had a presentation, Mayor, it was, no, it was like...
700,000.
Yeah.
This is a whole different quiet zone we're talking about.
This is a different...
Yeah, but you remember that presentation, right, Mayor?
Yeah, and we walked away from that one.
This is completely different from what the $700,000 was. So, but that's, you know, we can discuss that in the next meeting. I'll have, make sure you guys get a copy of the report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
The other thing, I was wondering, what incentive do these other towns have to bring their sludge over to Parsippany to get the incinerator?
The only incentive they would have is if it's cheaper than trucking it to a landfill.
And is it?
When the fuel costs go up, the cost to truck it goes up, okay? Synergy will have to be competitive with the cost of trucking it to a landfill.
Do we know that to be true?
Well, that's the risk they're taking. Apparently, they've done their homework, and I'm sure that they feel they can. See, our problem with the incinerator that we have now, when we built that incinerator, the federal government, who funded 75 or 80% of that, required that we make it a regional incinerator, and we take in garbage and burn garbage from surrounding towns, and it'd be a regional incinerator. Well, the cost to operate that was so high that it was cheaper for many towns to truck their garbage to landfills and not pay us to burn it. That being the case, that incinerator has, if we don't have enough garbage to burn to keep it functioning, we have to use natural gas to keep it heated and functioning, and that was costing us money. It became a losing proposition to keep it operational because we didn't have, we couldn't stay competitive with the cost of trucking the garbage to landfills. That's the same thing now with the sludge from the sewer treatment plant. Synergy will have to be competitive, have a better price than trucking it to landfills.
All right, your time's up, Mr. Simpson.
And by the way, it's going to be a smaller incinerator, a much smaller one than the one we have now.
As I recall, Newark built this big facility to burn garbage.
I used up as five minutes, I'm sorry. Okay, that's fine.
See, they built this big facility to burn garbage in Newark, and they were going to make money, and apparently, they're losing money, and I don't want to see the same thing happen in Parsippany.
Well, with the contract that our attorneys have worked up, Parsippany has no risk. They're taking the risk. It's a win-win for us. It would be the company that falls on its face if there's a problem.
I hope so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jamie, in regard to the sewer maintenance, what did you say? That fee was like $69 on your bill?
Sixty-one, it's like $61 a quarter.
Okay.
Something like that, maybe a little bit more.
All right, so you're thinking about going out and getting a qualified CPA to come in and check that out?
We're not going to look for, if it's going to cost money, I'm not going to...
Well, I mean, don't we have a qualified person here to do this?
Well, I can give it to the auditor and see if he would...
I would not want the municipality to be giving tax advice to residents with regard to their own, you know, personal...
to their own, you know, personal financial situation, and then have somebody rely upon that, and then have a problem with the IRS, and then the municipality gets sued for that. So, I don't think it's the appropriate role, and I would counsel strongly against the municipality providing legal tax advice to the residents.
But is it the same if we...
It's not really tax advice.
Pat, I'm sorry. But is it the same if we contract with someone, aren't they acting as our alter ego, so to speak?
You know, I'm a little troubled by, again, if somebody wants to know if a particular item or cost, there's a deduction for them, then they need to seek the advice of their accountant to determine that. I don't think it's appropriate, and I have some strong reservations about the town putting itself in a position of, as I say, essentially providing tax advice as to what costs are deductible and what costs are not deductible to an individual taxpayer, particularly if the IRS is unwilling to provide that answer directly. I don't think it's a wise thing for the town to do.
Okay, and what I don't find wise is going out and paying another CPA to come in and give us an estimate on something that sixty-nine dollars might not do anything for anybody's taxes.
Well, I don't think they ever indicate that. I think the thought was, is that there may be a, we have to develop this a little bit, but I don't think there was a suggestion that there would be any fees paid to a third-party CPA either.
I would hope not.
A pro bono CPA.
Yeah. You find them. I'll use them. Okay, so, yeah. All right, the water department. We used over seven hundred thousand dollars in surplus. We had a thirty-eight percent increase. And I just want to know that we're getting serious with this stuff, because for years now, we've been promised that you'd be watching the water department and the sewer department, where the money's going. And this year, we were blindsided with having to use that money for the water department. I would really like this council to do whatever they can to investigate the water department, to make sure it is being handled the way it should be handled, and that monies are being handled the way they should be handled, because it just seems unfeasible that something like that could happen. That much.
What's that about? You're talking about the rates?
I'm talking about how much we had to put into the water department to meet their revenues, their expenses and revenues. They don't match.
Well, one thing that you have to take into consideration, we can actually start with the sewer treatment plant, is the fact those rates were never, ever increased over years and years and years, and that's why you got hit with such a big increase. And let's go back to 1995. There was no increases from 1995 all the way to 2005. I'm going to the sewer treatment plant now. Okay, well, that creates a problem, because it was running in disrepair, the sewer treatment plant. We're running in a deficit of twenty-eight thousand, let's see, twenty-eight thousand dollars in 2005 in the sewer treatment plant, and we were headed for another deficit in 2006 of five hundred thousand, okay? Because the sewer treatment plant wasn't being maintained properly. So, what happened was Mayor Luther, at the time, who really had no choice, because if you're going to head to a five hundred thousand dollar deficit, you have to increase the rates. And it hasn't been appropriately increased over years. The same with the water department.
No, Jamie, that's not the question. The question is, we've had this increase, thirty-eight percent increase, in the water department in the last year, and this year, we have a deficit. And we shouldn't really, if we've just had a big increase...
We have a deficit in the water department? What do we have a deficit? We don't run in a deficit.
Not a deficit, Jamie. Stop twisting my words.
I'm not, but it's not a deficit.
Put seven hundred thousand dollars from the surplus money into...
Not water. That's why you confuse me.
That was the sewer department.
I didn't take it for water.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand went to the water?
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
Which went to the water? What surplus was used for the water?
For what? For the general fund?
Yes.
None. It was all sewer.
No. You said there was seven hundred thousand dollars in sewer and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in water?
No.
Or the other way around?
There's no water. It's just all sewer.
Am I mistaken?
Yes, you are, Pat.
I'm not mistaken.
You weren't mistaken.
I am not mistaken.
Seven hundred thousand dollars came from the sewer surplus to the general fund.
Right. And seven hundred and fifty thousand during the budget meetings was put into...
The general fund?
The water, no, not the...
Back into the sewer, right?
Back into the water department.
To operate the plant. That's different. You're saying it went to the general fund and it didn't...
No, I didn't say it went to the general fund. I said it went back to them.
But you also need to know that in 2006, seven hundred thousand dollars from the general fund was put into the sewer utility as well.
Okay, Jamie, I just, I just don't want twisting, okay?
It's not twisting, Pat.
I understand what you're saying, Jamie, but let's go forward.
I am going forward.
I don't want to know what happened in the past. We know it. We got hit with fifty-two percent. We got hit with thirty-eight percent. Okay, my question here is, are we going to keep track of this water and, I'm sorry, water and sewer department?
Yes, Pat, and that's being, it is being kept track of. You just don't like the answer that you're getting.
No, I don't like the fact that we spent one point, four hundred, one million, four hundred and fifty thousand in using surplus this year, so we can get our one point six percent under the two percent cap. Well, you know what? It didn't happen. You can sit there, and you could pat yourselves on the back for one point six percent, but when you use a million dollars out of surplus, you can't pat yourself on the back. I'm sorry.
Well, I disagree with you, Pat.
You can.
Decreased the tax, and I'm going to decrease the tax level by one point six percent, number one. Number two, you know, I've heard it from you and many other members of the public that we need to maintain our services, especially during the wintertime.
You don't, you don't understand.
Well, that's seven, no, that's seven hundred thousand dollars, maintain services, vital services here in town. That's seven hundred thousand dollars. Fact of the matter is, that money was given back to the same repairer, Pat. I'm giving it back to the residents of Parsippany.
I understand that, Jamie.
Pat, time's up.
And that's just the bottom line. You don't want to accept that. You don't want it, because, you know, you get all these files that say, did you know? Well, there's a lot of things they don't know, and they will never let you know publicly. That's the bottom line, Pat. And I will talk to you about this later on. You can come into my office. You're never going to accept the fact that it worked.
It worked, Jamie. I'm not saying it worked.
Okay, Pat, time's up. Okay, that's it, Pat.
You don't understand. That's not what I said.
I do understand, Pat. I do. Completely understand.
Thank you, Pat.
You just don't like what you have to hear. That's all it is.
Mayor, thank you.
I'm giving you the facts.
We're not fools, okay?
And I agree, they're not foolish, and they shouldn't be foolish.
Excuse me?
Sorry, John. Give me a minute.
Annalise Catanzaro, 67 Midvale Avenue. Happy Flag Day, everyone. Gentlemen, Miss Kehia, happy Flag Day. I had a couple, one quick question that I thought, Mr. Inglesino, you can help me with, and then I have some questions for Mr. Wistacalla. The first one is about the notice about the higher threshold for bidding. So, you had said that it's, next time, it'll be an increase. No, quickly. Excuse me, what is the current threshold? What is the proposed new threshold? And what is the benefit to us? And I have a lot of other questions for, about the projects, so if you'd be really quick, that'd be great.
Then you better answer all these questions after.
My understanding of the current...
Otherwise, you're going to cut into our time.
Without a purchasing agent, my understanding of the current bid threshold is seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay.
There's an increase to, I think, thirty-six thousand dollars if the municipality has a purchasing agent. The law specifically provides that if a municipality has a purchasing agent, then it can avail itself of a higher bid threshold. The reason for that is because larger municipalities have larger amounts of contracts, and the law seeks to create a balance between the lower threshold and also recognizing that there needs to be efficiency. And if there is a purchasing agent in place, then, you know, there is a presumption...
So, it's for efficiency sake?
A presumption that if there's a purchasing agent in place, that that purchasing agent is qualified and able to more efficiently, fairly, and under the law award contracts, and therefore, there is a higher threshold for the minimum bid threshold.
I have time. Welcome back. Okay, and then my other questions are for Mr. Wistacalla. The first one is, and Jasmine is not here, so I don't know if he'll know this, but do you know what we currently spend in the hallway fees with SpectraServe, which is our current bio-salads hauler? Do you know what that currently looks like?
He pays seventy, what is it, a ton?
Yeah. I may, I guess I probably need to get the microphone. I'm sorry about that. Stepped on your foot. Our last contract with SpectraServe, they were actually, and that's just up until this calendar year, was eighty-four dollars a ton, okay? But what you also have to factor into that is, we had to de-water that water as well. So, the actual disposal rate, on the conservative side, our actual estimates of what it costs us is eight to twelve dollars a ton. At eight dollars a ton, it was, with the eighty-four dollars, it was a total of ninety-two dollars per ton. The last proposal, we currently are under contract with SpectraServe. They did come in with a number, I believe it's seventy-seven dollars and fifty-seven And again, though, we're de-watering that, so if you have the eight to twelve on top of that, it's eighty-five dollars or eighty-eight dollars, depending on, you know, what that actual cost is.
Okay.
Okay. Yep.
So, then, you also mentioned, sorry, you also mentioned that the Cinerow Grow was the primary bidder. Does that mean there were other bidders, or is it just...
Yeah, to be honest, I probably was, they really were the only responsive bidder. SpectraServe came in with a bid also. It was completely unresponsive to what the, to whatever the specifications were, correct.
And then, when you said fifteen million dollars is the overall value, is that the net value, or is that the revenue that's coming in from hosting fees and from the savings that we had realized in the hallway and that kind of thing?
It's a combination of revenue generated and savings.
So, net?
Yes, it would be net, correct.
Okay. And then, the other question is, we are required to use SpectraServe for the period of twenty years with the optional five-year extension. Ciner, I'm sorry, right. Cinerow for that twenty or twenty-five-year period. If they don't come in lower than the hallway fees of, let's say, SpectraServe, so let's say, for some reason, and not this will happen, but gas prices go down, SpectraServe is now hauling away for seventy instead of the seventy-seven, are we obligated to continue hauling away with this company since we are entering this contract?
Well, we're not going to be hauling away. We're going to be incinerating here. So, yeah, no, it'll be treated here. If the market rates were to drop, we do have built into the contract a provision that we would pay market rate if it's less than, than whatever that amount is.
So, if we find a good amount, that will do it.
Well, no, they're going to be operating. We're contracting with them. I mean, let's face it, at the end of the day, they're investing sixty million dollars. They're designing it. We're negotiating what we believe is a fair deal at this point, and a deal that's certainly below market rate. But over that time, we are obligated to work with them. It's going to be, they will be operating the facility. They're actually going to own the facilities. They're going to lease the property from us. The incinerator is going to be theirs. You know, the de-watering equipment is our equipment technically, but they will be operating that, as well as the cogeneration facility and the other aspects. So, you know, we are going to be working, in some respects, it's a public-private partnership. We will be working with them.
Okay, time's up.
All right. No, because they have to enforce the five-minute rule uniformly with everybody. Although, since it's not your five minutes, Annalise, I just want to add that with regard to the public bid question, that this is a modification to the ordinance that I have recommended. Judy Silver indicated to me that it has been the municipality's practice to utilize the higher bid threshold, and it has done so for many, many years, because Parsippany has a purchasing agent. But I thought it was advisable to make that clearer by way of ordinance, which is the reason why that the ordinance is put forth. But there will not be any change in the practice of the municipality over the last several decades.
Are you...
Yeah, it's already in practice. This just clarifies that that practice is codified by ordinance of the town. It does not represent a change in practice for the municipality.
Yes, sir. I have some photographs I could show the...
State your name, please. Name and address.
Mike Denoble, 82 Gloucester Road. I have some photographs I could show you.
How you doing, Mr. Denoble? How's your family?
Good, very good. Thank you, sir. Can I share the photographs?
Yeah, tell us, tell the audience what it is, though.
Sure, these are photographs of Mirror Pond. Recently, the Lake Parsippany Homeowners Association pulled the plug on the dam, drained it. However, it's left really a mud flat behind. On top of that, when it rains, the pond now fills up and drains. This is causing stagnant water. We had someone from the Morris County Mosquito Commission there, and he said, yes, it will be a problem, and that the West Nile virus is present in this area. So, I just wanted to address the neighborhood's concerns regarding this condition, let you, basically make you aware of it, and also get some feedback on you, just that you know what's happening and what's being done moving forward on this.
Well, I was down there and looked at that, and it's a mess.
Okay, can I show you the photographs?
Yes, please. If you pass them down.
Thanks. There you go. Share that.
Are they all the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
One more. He was actually... A large area of the town does drain into the pond, so that's why it's really an important area, and that's how the township is involved in this, other than, of course, the obvious health hazard. So, at this point, I'm just seeking some feedback on the council on that you're aware of this, and are there any plans moving forward?
Pretty much, yeah, I would have to. Back in last year, I can't quite remember the month, in March, the LPPOA come to the administration trying to rectify, they had some issues with dam safety, and they could no longer afford to maintain the dam. They came to us to see if we would maintain it, we would take over ownership and that kind of stuff. One of the questions we asked them, and Mr. Wistacalla, you were with me on that, right? On the Mirror Pond?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're going to need his expertise in a moment, is that we have an agreement that we would take the dam, but we wouldn't, we would breach the dam. We would drain it out and put it into a more of a, you know, we didn't want, what we didn't want to do was repair the dam. It was just too costly to repair the dam. The LPPOA couldn't afford to repair the dam. But I did ask them, did you notify any of the residents in the area? And they said they sent letters to everybody in Gloucester Road, and that, you know, they were aware, and they supposedly made an offer that you could purchase the actual pond if you wanted to. But they also told me that, you know, there was never a response back. So, we had to make a decision here. Do we want to purchase the dam? Maintain it was too costly. So, we said, okay, what we'll do on the township side of it, since most of that stormwater runs in, is from our streets and our roads, we're going to breach, you know, we're going to breach the dam, and we're going to, eventually, when it completely dries up, we're going to start going in that area and try to aesthetically bring it back to life the way, you know, it was beforehand. And this has been this way for a long time, though, I mean, from what I understand. And that's where we're at right now. We had a meeting with them last month. We had all the soil studies done that we needed to get done in order to move forward with this. And once all the studies were done, they said they had the approval to unplug the dam, the dam, and they did that. And that's why it's in the state we're in. And I spoke to a gentleman from Gloucester, actually on Elmwood, and he told me about the issue with the mosquitoes and the mosquito commission in Morris County. So our engineer is on top of that. So we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that this is gonna be rectified here. Going forward now, you know, I'm getting other, several other emails from the Mayor's Action Center in regard to this, that the residents on Gloucester aren't too happy. Here's the problem we have on the township side, we can't maintain that dam, it's too costly, we just can't do it. And the LPPOA can't do it either. But they're under strict orders from the DEP, that something has to be done. And that's why we got involved, because it became a, it could become a health, you know, hazard for the town as well. But you also need to understand that, once the township takes ownership over, that becomes public access to the public as well. And that's where we're at right now. But I understand your concerns, and that will be, that will be handled and rectified. Now, Mr. Wissakala, am I correct?
Yes, right, right, Mayor. We're working on a letter of intent and an agreement for the LPPOA. I propose...
Well, you're getting yelled at a lot tonight.
Yes, we're working with the P O A on a letter of intent, and subsequently, an agreement itself, for us taking, taking over that property. And obviously, you know, we're gonna have to, there'll be no cost in terms of the acquisition, but we'll have to use funds for breaching and, you know, whatever remediation we need to do there.
And those funds can be used for...
And to be frank, we did, we were concerned about, I mean, I was, one thing I was concerned about were the residents on Gloucester Road, and they didn't seem to make it was an issue. But, but John, go ahead. Yeah, and the funds that would be used would be funds from the Open Space Trust Fund, because that, the township owning the property is a statutory requirement in order for Open Space Trust Fund monies to be used, so the money would not be coming out of the general operating budget, it would be coming out of the Open Space Trust, which is, you know, funds that are collected on a yearly basis, based upon the will of people who voted to create the fund.
Well, in the, in the Open Space Committee also, when we talked about remediation, we were talking about plantings of vegetation of some sort that would help dry it up and not make it a wetland or breeding ground for mosquitoes.
Mayor, what was, you mentioned a lot of money, but how much money are we talking about to repair that dam?
It was, it was...
$250,000 to repair the dam.
Quarter million dollars.
But to breach it was $134,000, $135,000. So, to drain it out was cheaper than to maintain it. Then, don't forget, once the dam is fixed, we gotta maintain the dam.
Some of the costs that are built in there, too, is you've got a considerable amount of sediment that's built, built up in that area as well.
Budget, too.
Yeah, dredging and things of that nature.
And we asked a lot of questions on the meetings, because we knew that, once it was drained, there's gonna be a lot of muck.
And one of the things I know we had insisted, as you had indicated, Mayor, was soil sampling in the sediment base to make sure we weren't, at the end of the day, getting something that we weren't expecting. Any type of contamination.
Okay, time's up.
All right.
Hi, Jessica Brosnan, Gloucester Road as well, 96. Just to kind of add on a couple more questions to what Mr. Noble was throwing out there, I'm just, I'm just curious what the timeline is, because my concern, as a parent of a newborn, is, is really the health aspect, not to mention our property prices take, I would imagine our property values just plummeted. I feel bad for anybody who is thinking of even selling their house on our road, because there's no way, if you went into our backyard, because we have a full view of it at our house, Mr. Fox was there, I believe, I don't know if I was the only yard you got a vantage point from, but it is pretty terrible. I'm worried about the, you know, the timeline for this, and I'm wondering if there's something in place. I guess the second part to that question is, you're saying it would cost more money to fix than to breach, but if you are breaching and dredging, and you're gonna have to divert, there's a natural stream or creek or whatever that feeds into it near our house, having to divert that and plant plants, is that really gonna cost less than...
It will.
Okay, considerably? And I also, just, is it gonna be something, I mean, I know that you're trying to prevent it from becoming a wetland, but is it going to be something that you've mapped out to be aesthetically pleasing as well? Because again, I mean, I am concerned foremost about the, about the health issue, but it is also an aesthetic thing, because we are concerned about property values.
I spoke to the Parks and Forestry Director, James Walsh, and, believe me, he's, he's a wonderful guy to work with, he's gonna make that place look outstanding.
Okay. We are concerned that the fact that the LPPOA gave us no warning that this was happening, and I would, I mean, I have like, a law and order knowledge of the legal system, what I get is from that TV show, but I would, but I would assume that that's somewhat negligent, because they gave us no warning, and then they have posed a health threat. I would imagine they're opening themselves up to a lawsuit if somebody gets West Nile.
Well, I can ask them to send me a copy of the letter that they said they sent, and I don't have a copy of it.
Wasn't this year?
So, no, they said it wasn't. It was actually last year they sent it, they sent it. And I can get a copy of it, and then we can go from there. I mean, you know, they came to us in regards to the, it was really the DEP pressuring.
Right, no, I'm aware, yeah.
And it was just like, they had to, they had to do something, there was no, either way, they had to do something, and that wasn't because the township put any pressure on them, it's because the DEP did. And then, that's when we got involved.
So then, the timeline for this is what, as far as...
There's, I think there was a timeline, actually from the DEP, there's a timeline, from what I understand, John. And we have, you know, now, we're gonna be following that timeline as well. What we can do is, once we get it all the timelines in order, I will, you know, make sure you get informed on a regular basis in regards to the dam.
I just also want the public to know that this isn't really just an issue of the residents of Gloucester Road, I mean, our, I don't know who's familiar with that area and who's not, but it backs right up to a park, and it's right up against the Little League. And when I take my son out for a walk, there's every, the last time I went, there was like a barbecue in the rented-out space with like, 100-plus people, plus Little League games going on, and, you know, people taking walks. It's not just the residents that are really at risk here for, for the health, it's really the general public, because that is a general public space. So I just want people to know, because I feel like sometimes, when you have an issue in the neighborhood, people feel like that's, you know, okay, it's just their problem, but I, you know, assure you that it really is the problem of everybody who uses that park.
What I'll do, Jessica, after the meeting is, I'll get you my card, you can call the Mayor's Action Center tomorrow, and we'll make a schedule up, and I'll let you know what's going on on a regular basis, so you know. And I can actually, because I need to know what the next steps are, and we're gonna discuss that as well, and I'll let you know what the next steps are, so you can at least be involved and know what's going on in that area. I really truly thought that the LPPOA, LPPOA, they notified, because that's what I was told. So, I mean, and they were, you know, they were, everything went pretty congenial, everything was nice, everything went well, it's just that something had to be done, and we had to make a decision, because if we would've said no, then they would've had nowhere else to go, and then...
Understood, I think it's just the residents have an issue being left in the dark.
Right.
This is really the biggest issue.
You won't be left in the dark with me.
No, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mayor, is there, can we get the mosquito commission down?
Yes.
Do some sprayings, so, and the health issue might decrease a little bit before we get this project completed?
Yep.
Thank you.
Douglas Marose, 60 Gloucester Road. Mr. Mayor, just to follow up real quickly here, just on one or two other issues, you had stated that the permission was given for the dam to be breached, but yet after it's breached, now you said, oh, we're gonna work on mosquitoes, oh, now we're gonna work, I'm making it pretty, now we're gonna do this. Why wasn't all this done ahead of time, and having it really coordinated? Because you see the picture, it's a mess. I got a 14-by-20-foot deck that I can't use now. You wanna buy it? It's, you know, it's hideous looking out there. You know, but I don't understand why nothing was coordinated.
I know, we discussed it.
So that... Boom, 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 let's get it done.
Well, and if I may, because I was in the meetings with the mayor, and I can, and as the mayor said, you know, the, the LPPOA reps that were there, you know, indicated, letters went out, certified, I'm not sure how many, but the fact of the matter is, it's still the P O A dam, it's not the township dam. To be honest with you, they didn't need our permission to breach the dam. In fact, I think that was what their intention to do, was to go that way. What they're looking for at the end of the day is to breach it, to turn it over to the municipality, and have the municipality use open space funds to take whatever the necessary steps are to remediate it. So, it's not a situation where they came to us and said, we need your approval, give us your blessing. What we told them is, well, you know, at the end of the day, we'll, yeah, we'll use open space monies, we'll acquire it, but it was still the P O A's call to breach the dam, it's their obligation, their responsibility with the DEP, and that's how it proceeded that way. And that's how the timing was, that was their pressure, it wasn't the township pressure, but what we're doing is moving, and trying to get, get to a point where, you know, we can move and address what your concerns are.
And I think, my other main concern is either, let's have the dam fully breached, because like Marx, I believe, it's filling up, it's emptying out, that's making matters a lot worse. There's all these little puddles, breeding holes, can we get some dirt in here temporarily, just to fill it in? You know, something almost, I mean, literally within a week or two, can anything be done?
Do we have title to that property?
No, we don't. We met with them on May 23rd, just before the Memorial Day weekend. At that point, we said, well, this is how we will proceed, we'll have a letter of intent, we'll have an agreement, but they had timing, they had their own timing issues, which didn't necessarily sync up with the township, they had their own DEP obligations, I'm not even sure the specifics on that. But, you know, it was, it still is their property, they proceeded with whatever they needed to with the DEP. But we'll move it along and, you know, do what we need to to get it in a contract.
Parks and Forestry Commission, the DEP.
The bottom line...
We did get a letter, the letter was sent out in January, I have a certified letter from the LPPOA stating their...
The bottom line is, we can't invest money or time into that thing until we have title to it.
All right.
And especially the outside funding.
I just feel at this point, it is extremely urgent to do something.
I agree with you.
Let's get the dam fully breached, if we're gonna do that, because like I said, it's filling up. It said the dam is filling, filling up, and like I said, it filled up over the weekend, now it's lowering back down, so that's just making matters a lot worse. And like I said, the holes, to me, that's the immediate thing to see what we can do.
All right.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
My address is actually Elmwood, Elmwood Drive, and I'm on the corner of Gloucester and Elmwood, and there is a storm drain at the end of my property. So while you're considering what you're gonna do about the dam, the dam, please don't forget about the storm drain.
Thank you.
What's her address?
Ma'am?
Name and address.
Name and address, ma'am.
Would you name an address, please?
It's Carol Harrison, kind of at 67 Elmwood, kind of on the corner of Gloucester.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council?
That's it?
I'm Helen Lojides, I live at 55 Gloucester Road, and of course, I have a 95-year-old mother and an 18-month-old granddaughter. So my concerns are health issues, and it's not just my immediate family, it's in the block, but as the other lady said, it is a general, you know, park area, where not just Parsippany residents come, but outside residents come. So if this issue isn't, you know, taken care of pretty speedily, it could be disastrous. So that's my concern, and I'm hoping that something will be done to make it safe, health-wise.
Certainly, we can reach out to the LPPOA and get this thing, move as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I am an LPPOA member, too.
We don't have to have title to have that sprayed, though.
No, we don't have the title for that.
We can get on that right away?
Yeah, I'll get on that right away, but to get the whole thing...
One of the things we might be able to do, too, and Council President Fox had the idea, was to invoke the, utilize the mosquito commission.
Right.
And we may have to put them in touch with the Property Owners Association, because it's not, it's not the town's property. So maybe we can, we can do that to coordinate some spraying there on an expedited basis.
Until your other master plan takes place, you know, to fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing no one rise, I close the public portion. I have a motion to adjourn.
John, John, if I may?
Okay.
If you don't have a copy of this, please grab one, it's up front, because I'm gonna be actually going through it as I speak. There's a bunch right up here, please. So feel free to grab one, please.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Or you're done?
I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, the title of the article, front page, "Let the Sun Shine In." As you go through it, it goes to a part that says, "Annalise Catanzaro asked the council to compare these projects to the 2007 solar project that was rejected." Well, I did my homework, and I was checking a project, and the two new separate projects come at no cost or minimal cost to Parsipony, with a savings of $463,807 in energy savings. Back in 2007, the plan that was rejected was $8.3 million minus $1.7 million in a grant, so it would've been a $6.6 million bond to put solar panels on Sharky's, Sharky's Dump, if you know where that is. And if you know where that is, it's in major need of repair. If you go back to the minutes from that day, because I was going through the minutes, it wasn't that the spot was rejected, what happened is, everyone that got up and talked just said it's not, it's not the place to be putting it. Then if you go down in the articles, I'm just gonna skip around a little bit, where it goes down to, this is the typical partisan games these folks play, detriment of Parsipony. And then my favorite, Parsipony needs council members that can look outside party lines, make decisions, that are in the best interests of our community and not rubber stamp. Well, I gotta tell you, 2011 hasn't been easy for the council or the mayor. We had a 2% cap implemented by Governor Christie, we came in at 1.59%. We started with massive layoffs to the workforce, especially the police department, we came in with no, no layoffs whatsoever to town workers. Parsipony is well-known for our services, and we're working hard to keep them in place. When this council votes, we vote for what's in the best interest of our taxpayers and all the residents in Parsipony. So if doing what's right for the people of Parsipony makes me a rubber stamp voter in your mind, then you can feel free to call me whatever you want. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Roll call.
What are you looking at me for? What are you looking at me?
Are we done?
Yeah, we're done. There was no...
Natalie, did you get my last email?
I just did.
And Natalie? Just did?
I have your address.
That's, that's my response to that.
Oh, I know, I know, just because that's what they, that's what they wanted.
Jamie? This is gonna hit the primary, Parsipony Light and Patch. Response that Parsipony Light ordered.
Oh, yeah! Yeah, it was, she wasn't paying attention.
It was on the ballot at a primary.
Like, it was, if you have enough copies. It's like putting a battery on a car with no tires. You wanna put it on a facility that's decaying.